Welcome, everybody, to our March meeting. Can you believe we're here already? I'd like to call the meeting to order at, what time do we have here? 7:38 PM. I'm going to ask Kurt to review the legalese that we have to go through. If you could all be patient. Kurt, you want to go ahead?
Sure. Information regarding this remote electronic public meeting on March 14, 2020, in response to the COVID-19 pandemic and in an effort to reduce the risk of transmission by virtue of attendance at public meetings, Governor Lamont suspended in-person open meeting requirements and permits conducting public meetings remotely by conference call, video conference, or other technology. A copy of the full text of Executive Order 7B (1) is available for review on the Town of Monroe's website, www.monroect.org. Accordingly, the Town of Monroe has selected Go-to Meeting as a preferred technology application to conduct this remote public meeting in compliance with Executive Order 7B (1). This technology will permit up to 250 members of the public to participate in real time in the public meeting via computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone by the access information set forth on the meeting agenda. This is how we recommend it, and any interested participant, download and utilize Go-to Meeting software applications, which are available on the public meeting link below prior to the commencement of the meeting. Hang on, Jane. Each meeting shall have unique participation information, including access code, phone number, and live link. Please be sure that you are accessing the correct information for the correct meeting. Any members of the public who desire to submit information relative to the business set forth on the agenda may do so up to one hour advance via electronic mail to the address set forth on this meeting agenda, which is kanderson@wmnr.org. Any members of the public who desire to submit written information relative to the business set forth on the agenda may do so. Notice hereby given that this remote electronic public meeting shall permit the public to view or listen anonymously, and when permitted, participate in real time. Two, be recorded and posted at the town's website within seven days. Three, be made available to the public within reason upon in town hall upon written request. In addition to standard parliamentary procedures outlined in this agenda, the following special rules shall apply to all participants. Please mute your microphones so as we reduce background noise if any are not speaking. Prior to speaking in each occasion, each speaker shall clearly state their name and title for the record. The use of chat features are prohibited and will might not be considered during the meeting if in use. Notice is hereby given that only 250 participants may access this remote electronic public meeting at any one time. Access is granted solely to the Go-to Meeting technology on a first-access basis and is not within the control of the Town of Monroe. While it is anticipated that this participant limit will be sufficient, should the participants reach said limit, the meeting shall maybe adjourned and continue at a later date using technology appropriate to ensure all members of the public may participate.
Beautiful. Thank you. I know that was a lot of words to get out, but we got to do what we got to do. Has everybody had an opportunity to check over the minutes from the last meeting?
I never got minutes.
Yeah, I couldn't find minutes of the last meeting. I'm sorry. I brought a lot of stuff.
I wonder if I forward them to you with a really good sign for that or with something you could receive?
I assume they're all right. Pass to someone else who's read them.
Perhaps I'll read them to you with the piece of vision.
Who got the minutes?
I have a copy. Rose sent them out. All right, so I'll just review it and see if we can just think through it quickly. Everybody knows the members. We have on our staff who was in attendance. We had a call to order at 7:05 by Brian. Kurt read the notice regarding the remote. He added, "For September 16th, Betty made a motion to accept. From September 16th meeting, the motion was seconded by Patty unanimously approved." General Manager's report, October 20th financial report, Kurt reviewed the October 2020 financial report, total revenue of $223,000 versus $180,000 last year, due in part to the $69,000 trail of the gift WMNR received from a person in Richfield. Membership is down a bit. Member challenges up and assured PSA's are down significantly. The big picture, WMNR is doing okay thanks to the best. Expenses this year, as of October 1st, is $198,000, which is last year is $225,000. The difference is a reduction in salaries, and that's on site operations, a reduction in rent. We're not paying rent to Mount Kisco, which is $1,000 a month. Kurt pointed out that net income so far for this year is $24,000 versus last year of negative $45,000. Betty asked for hospitality expenses here. Kurt explained that it gets, you get to get volunteers and staff, and it's just a good point to stop. Betty commented on the underwriting. Kurt explained that no one was doing live concerts to promote, but we are slowly beginning to get number writing. And we're PSA's back. Betty made a motion to accept the October 20th meeting report. My buddy unanimously approved. There are technical details here on the Mount Kisco dreams later. Kurt stated the Crown Castle, the company will be renting tower space from, we will be renting the tower space from correctly used in the area to get past the month of the first election. Once the Town Council has approved, the first selectmen to sign the lease, a new construction company will be engaged, which would take a couple of months. Kurt stated everything is a motion. Hopefully, Mount Kisco will be back on by March or April of 2021. Kurt explained if we're not back on the air by, either with our new location or our old location, we lose authorization from the FCC and can't get it back. The Plan B is being worked up. Only antenna is to get back on the air for a short time to stop the clock on the 12-month timeframe, so we don't lose the authorization. This will be our most expensive move. A major donation gave us $10,000 last year and assured to give another $10,000 when we're back on the air, which will help pay for the installation cost. Brian asked if Plan B is something Kurt and Mark can do, or if the team had, if a team had to be hired. Kurt explained the antenna is still up at our old location, and with the purchase of about $500 worth of batteries, both he and Mark can handle it. The battery purchase won't be a waste of money because it'll be used as backups. Kurt explained this is the first time we've ever lost a site. John explained back in the 1990s, the FCC did a major change in the Communications Act. Congress made the laws that any transmitter that is off the air for a year has to give up its license and therefore, and there is no appeal to the FCC. Going on to the new WMNR 88.1 FM transmitter, our main transmitter in Monroe at 88.1 FM is the original transmitter that was bought in 1993 and operated in Guilford from 93 to 2016. It was then moved to Monroe and hard to get parts for. We're looking to replace it and have the current one be our backup. We have two special people who have donated $10,000 towards the $20,000 cost to replace the transmitter. We're doing additional fundraising, so we raised an additional $2,500. Letters went out tonight to certain members, and we're sure we can raise the additional money for the new transmitter at 88.1 in the Stephanie Building. Onto the generator donation. John explained how difficult the industry is today with the pandemic. The generator donated by John Levine III is being stored indoors at a very cheap price. It has been tested and works properly. WMNR is going to get quotes to install it. Installation could cost more than $3,000. Once the quotes are done, they will be passed down, passed through the town, and a vendor will be chosen. Kurt stated that the current generator does work, but it's on its last legs, and the new one has less hours. Brian said Sippen is taking on generator work this year, focusing on home business, but the size generator we have is right on the fringe of their business, so something to keep in mind. Tower painting, guy wire tightening. Kurt explained that we have the purchase orders for the tower painting and rigging. The schedule has to be worked out with the vendors and the school so that we can, so work can be done when kids are not in school. Brian asked if there are temperature issues with this project. The answer was painting, yes. Rigging, no. And the guy wire tightening, no. The school schedule was discussed, and it's not. Now, at this time, what the school schedule is going to be, going to be going forward. Does not know. Okay. Kurt assured everyone it will be done if the new purchase orders have been issued into the next fiscal year. It won't be a problem. John explains it's an FAA regulation that towers be painted a bright color, and they cannot fade. And the public participation part of the meeting, Kurt mentioned that we're going to have a one-day drive this summer, this coming Saturday, December 5th, which we chose Saturday for our one-day drive because that's when we make the most money. A consensus of meeting dates for next year was agreed upon March 2nd, May 4th, September 7th, and December 7th, 2021. The meeting was adjourned at 7:58 PM. So now we have the minutes. Who would like to approve the minutes?
I, Betty Hady, member of the commission. I approve and accept the minutes.
Would you like to second that?
Fred will already be a commission member. I would second. Nice job, Brian. It sounded very efficient.
It was kind of the speed reading version.
Yeah, it sounds good.
I understood everything you said, Brian.
Oh, good. Hi, Brian Quinn. Everybody else in favor? You have to say it. I'm sorry. Approve in your name.
Panitia approves.
Fred will already approve.
Great. And I did. Brian Quinn approved. All are in favor. The minister approved as presented. So then we're going to move on to the General Manager's report. Kurt, would you like to bring us up to speed on the financial report? There will be a vote anticipated, so that means you all have to pay attention.
I did just send out two minutes ago copies of the minutes that we, Brian just finished reading. Next time when we have our meeting, I'll make sure I send the minutes out as well as the financial report. So the next one will have the budget. Yes, looking at the financial report. The last year we
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
I'm having, I'm having trouble hearing. Can Fred and Elizabeth and people? You? Thanks.
Much better.
I think Fred was the noisy one. Okay, it's quiet now, right? Good. Okay, so the financial report that I did send out. Let's see. Where to go? Where to go? Where to go? So the last fiscal year that we, the last month that we have a completed financial report, where we've got the, the bank statement, and we've been able to reconcile to it is January. So we've got January 31st numbers, which represents seven out of the 12 months of our fiscal budget for the year, fiscal year 2021. On the income side, you'll see particularly compared to last year, that we're much better shape. That's in large part because a year ago, we had not received the first part of the Corporation for Public Broadcasting Grant, which you do see listed under this fiscal year. Of course, also, this fiscal year is so much better than last fiscal year because of the $99,000 in charitable gifts. That includes the $20,000 that was received specifically for the new WMNR 88.1 FM transmitter, and the balance represents estate gifts that we received.
That's wonderful.
On the expense side, now even though, and that helps to make up for the fact that you'll see the fourth number down is the assured PSA's income. Last year at this time, it was $36,000. So far, we've only taken in $4,000 this year because of the lack of concerts and organizations paying to run announcements about their concerts. If you go to the, to the bottom of the second page, which shows the total expenses, the bottom right-hand column represents the current fiscal year total expenses so far of $370,000, which is less than what we had had last year at the same time of $412,000. And that's in part due to the $11,000 that we didn't pay because there was no live tanglewood. And there's some other differences as well. You'll see halfway down or third of the way down, there's salaries of $77,000 last year and $66,000 this year. That's $10,000 less, $11,000 less. And that's because of, we have less part-time. That's because a year ago, Rose was working as a part-time person, and this year she's in the full-time category. And we actually saved because Jane and I were the two full-time categories a year ago, and Rose was part-time, and this year, this, at this point, we've saved some money because Rose went from halftime to full-time. And so there's been a little bit of savings from that. You'll also see that that some of the differences in expenses so far this year than last in terms of why they're down. But you also say that's good numbers, and you can see the net income for this as, as of June, July, January 31st. Now, we've got quite a positive number compared to last year. So we're in good shape for this year. Are there any questions about it?
So you're not really seeing a big impact from COVID?
Well, the main, the impact from COVID has not been from on membership. It's been through the underwriting. Normally, we would take in $60,000. Last year, we took in about $43,000 before COVID hit in mid-March. This year, I think we'll be probably lucky to maybe hit 15,000 or 20,000 by the time the year's out. But that's a very little reduction. You consider we might be 40,000 down in our $650,000 budget, $40,000 cash out of a $600,000 cash budget. There's a non-cash component. So there's been an impact, but for us, fortunately, it's very minimal. I mean, unlike everything else, people can, they're at home, they value their radio more than ever. They don't have money to go to concerts, or they do have money, they're not going to concerts. There aren't any concerts except a few virtual ones for a few dollars. And so the, our membership income has been just fine through COVID.
That's remarkable that you've been able to keep it as consistent as you have through thick and thin. I mean, these are very trying times. You don't know whether listeners could be out of work, or there could be just anything that could change the trajectory of the, the income.
Yeah, I mean, right now, it's, we have about 40,000, 50,000 people listening. We've got a less than 10% of them that contribute. So it's a very small fraction. People could still contribute whatever they'd like. Some people still have money, others don't. People can enjoy us whether they can afford to contribute or not, whether they can afford to contribute a little or a lot. We're still, you know, yeah, we're fortunate. Unlike a lot of other businesses that had to reinvent themselves, we were already set up for contactless delivery of our music, our programming.
Anybody else with questions?
If you do, you'll have to unmute yourself.
Okay.
Looks like we're in good hands, Kurt. Thank you.
Well, radio, WMNR is just working. Radio's working, so, or kind of radio, not the ones that air advertisements, but. So if there's no questions, then you, somebody to to make a motion, somebody to second the motion, and then a vote.
All right, so the mic is on. Do you need questions?
Fred Valerio, commission member, I make a motion that we accept the budget as presented. Sounds good.
Excellent. Is there a second?
Second, Betty.
Go ahead, Betty.
You need to say your name first, Betty, before you second it.
I can't get used to this. Elizabeth Betty, commission member, and I second the motion.
Great. All unfair.
Go ahead, Brian.
I accept the motion in the second, and I accept the manager's report. Patty Panitia, member.
Brian Quinn, I accept and vote that we pass this, so it looks like we're unanimously passing it. So thank you for presenting the financial report. Would you like to move on to the Mount Kisco translator?
Sure. Do you want to mute yourself, Fred?
Yeah.
Thanks. Sorry, let me just bring up the agenda here. Agenda from a year ago, wrong March.
I can guide you through if you'd like.
Kisco translator update. Working with the Crown Castle company that leases the tower is ridiculously frustrating. They were able to make some changes to the lease that the town would like, but I still don't have one to approve yet, to then submit to the first selectman and the town attorney for their review before it gets approved by the Town Council. Because I'm worried about getting it built by the and operated by the June 15th deadline. I'm gonna now go ahead and order the batteries to, to, that we would use to put the translator back on the air for a day or two before they run out. And that would then reset the one-year clock. And I need to do that before June 15th, but I'm gonna go ahead and see if I can't do it in the next couple of weeks. Place an order with the battery company and keep that moving forward. It's a 59-page lease. And they anyway, it's been one of the more frustrating experiences. We're on a lot of sites. We have some lengthy leases. None of them have been this bad. But I'll make sure that we don't lose the authorization and that but one of the things I even put in the lease, which was a five-year lease, was that if we lose the authorization, then the lease is up and done with. Because I didn't want to have the town sign off on a lease that for an authorization, we might end up losing. So even, I got that in as a backup, but I'll work hard to keep the authorization. So Mount Kisco is still in progress.
You explained why the batteries made sense, and the batteries will run it for how long before you have to go back and re-implement?
The batteries will barely run it for a day or two, but I'm hoping, yes, but that'll be long enough for the FCC to reset the clock. You have to file a special temporary authority request when something is off the air for more than 30 days. And they give you a six-month authorization. We filed already to extend that authorization for an additional period till June 15th. So I'll notify them it's back on the air, and then a day later, I'll say, whoops, it's off the air again, but hopefully they'll, that'll reset the clock. Well, we might be able to get two or three days worth out of the batteries. Depends what power level we set the transmitter at.
Okay. Makes sense. Questions, anybody? Jane, you're very quiet over there. All right, moving on to the transmitter update, right?
Yes, the transmitter update. So we did place the order for the $20,000 transmitter. The we don't have a ship date yet, but and we still need to order a rack to put it in and some other parts that Mark's going to be working on, but we have pushed it forward. The so we're moving it along, and it's a small point, but last night during the winds, or was it two nights ago? I lose track. The transmitter went off the air because of a brief temporary loss of power, and Mark manually had to reset it remotely. When we get this new transmitter in, when there is a brief power interruption, we won't have to manually restart the transmitter. It'll, it'll just stay on the air. So we're looking forward to getting it. It'll give us a better service.
Excellent. And that's going into the Stephanie Shack?
Yes, it's, we're gonna take out an old transmitter that was donated to us. It's the size of a big refrigerator and put this thing in, which is the size of a small dorm refrigerator, but we will put it in a standard six-foot-tall equipment rack. So we'll have to take one thing out to make room for it. What we're taking out has no value. It was given to us for free, and we've been trying to give it away so far, or sell it, but no one's interested. It's very old technology and doesn't even make a full normal output power. So we'll end up actually, worst case, having to pay to have it taken away. I don't know how much, so.
Any questions on it? Okay, now, if you don't have the minutes in front of you, this next topic may seem a bit alarming, so section 3D is General Manager Succession Plan. Kurt, I'd love to hear what you want to talk about.
Well, I've been manager for 38 years. I was appointed November of 1982, and back when the station was 600 watts monophonic, 600 watts output power monophonic, and we weren't sure what its future was like. When John and Carol started the station, they envisioned it to be a local station, which they got up and working and lots of local broadcasts and things. But in the late 1970s, the FCC put forward a rule where a part-time station that was on the FM band that was only on the air part of the time could not reserve rights to use that frequency if it didn't stay on the air a certain number of minimum hours. And back then, John said, you know, only in their good days did they meet there, when they had a lot of volunteers available, did they meet those sort of minimum hours. So it happened in 19, I believe it was 78, when John and Carol moved to, got reload by ITT to Roanoke. Then another fellow got involved who had a separate nonprofit group that helped use volunteers to fill airtime. And he ended up realizing, well, Fairfield County didn't have an NPR station. So let's turn the small little station into a big station and have it change from serving just Monroe to serving the Fairfield, upper Fairfield, north, upper Fairfield County region. And he started in that transformation plan and got maybe halfway around halfway around for grabbing the brass ring and having it all done. And then everything fell apart in the summer of 1982, weeks before I just happened to show up to volunteer as a broadcaster. So with the, the, the future of the station having been transformed to the basic single format of classical music and a little jazz and folk. John and Carol and I then put our shoulders to the wheel and transformed the station. Went stereo in 84, went to higher power, I think also later in 84. And then went to the taller tower in 87 that we're currently on. And then after 1987, added more stations for more coverage to be more self-supporting. So anyway, it's been a great 38 years, but I do need to plan for my succession. And so I thought better to talk about it sooner rather than later. My ballpark that I'm shooting for is to retire in a year and a half, December of 2022, when I've been here for 40 years. And, and of course, one of the things I want to mention of the commission besides notifying you is just mentioned that it is, of course, up to the first selectman as the chief executive officer of the town of Monroe to determine how my replacement is hired and and I don't know what he'll end up choosing, but I would hope that he, of course, would involve some, if not all, the members of the WMNR Commission in in interviewing my successor. Of course, I also need to plan for to put in the budget and in, and plan appropriately. One of the things I should mention, WMNR gets an annual grant from the Corps of Fish and Public Broadcasting of, well, now it's down to about $77,000 a year. And that requires we have two full-time paid people and then additional part-time people that add up to the equivalent of two full-time people. And we end up having two full-time, and then we end up having the equivalent of about oh, three full-time people when you add up all the part-timers. So refine on the part, on the, on the part-time equivalent, the full-time equivalent of using part-timers. We would end up needing to replace myself with a full-time person and and I think that's doable. The next person would be a different kind of could function differently than I do. The station is in a different period, phase. They don't need to be somebody who knows how to add new transmitters, translators to the station, which was a crucial thing that I did with John in the, in the 1990s. When we expanded our coverage. But and I'm still going to be around as a volunteer to assist in the operation of the station for running to transmitters and still having a weekly broad, weekly on-the-air classical music show. So I'm not moving to Florida when I retire. Still be around, willing to volunteer. And I just wanted to notify everybody and then I can start coming up with a poss, possible plan with some other nonprofits when they've been a longtime leader. They end up having this, I knew some music group in Danbury, 30-year manager, executive director got retired out. And then also WSHU recently, their manager had been there 40 years, retired. They had a these two organizations had a six- or 12-month period where there was a new one appointed. And the old one was still around to help with the transition and to make sure that all, everything got handed off smoothly. So I think of examples I've seen in other organizations that WMNR could utilize for the transition process. Any questions or comments? Please remember to unmute your microphones. There's no decision on this one. I just wanted to notify people and get feedback.
I've said since day one that I think it's important to have a succession plan for everybody so that the station can live on forever. And, and I've had some concerns about that, but I find your role very difficult to replace. And, and that, that concerns me some. Not that I don't wish the very, very best for you, and I want you to be happy no matter what, and you have earned every bit of our honor and respect, but to find a person that would have your talent in FM broadcasting, personnel management, business management, fundraising, interfacing with the town. And gosh, I could go on for an hour with a list that's so long. I would think that finding somebody that even came up to 50% of your skill set would be a needle in the haystack. And I don't think we could possibly afford them. I think you've been a great asset and a wonderful member for this team and on behalf of the town, I have some concerns. But I'm very, very much appreciative that you're not sick and leaving us, and I'm very grateful that, that you're talking about it a year and a half in advance rather than, you know, two weeks' notice. And I think this will be the start of many conversations that have to come as a result because you are one in a million.
Well, I know it's been a difficult decision because this is your heart and soul, and yet it's time to step aside. Jane has found out. But do they have a job description for a general manager? Or does that, you have to start with that? I mean, do you have to start at grassroots fulfilling your position?
Very simple one. It's decades old. It would need to be totally redone, and that's part of the process.
I can see that's more of the progress.
There's, there's both the essential items to do, and then there's the extras. I mean, the fact that I can go to some of the transmitters and I know which buttons to press. And if I have any questions, I can call up Mark and go, he could walk me through it. Now, that doesn't need to be in the next general manager's purview. We need somebody that's not in the most essential things that they do. I'm still be, I'm not going anywhere, still be glad to do those things. Mark handles most of the transmitters, but occasionally if something happens up at South Kent, glad to run up there. It's not that far from my house in Roxbury. I've even run to Stepney and recently and tweaked some things. So I can still spec, particularly assist with with the technical support. You know, having somebody who understands all of the ins and outs, yeah, it'll they won't know everything quite as well, but while I appreciate the laudatory comments and I do, you know, to say one of the three things that I wanted to do in life was run a, a radio station. I will reveal that when I grad, right before I graduated college, I was looking at getting a small commercial radio station in the country. Back then in 1978, there were frequencies available in New England where you did not have to buy it. They were off the air, but listed on the FCC's table of allocations. And you could just file an application and it would be yours. And I looked at some of those and I decided not to go the commercial route. And I'm really glad that I ended up working in, in a public radio format where the mission is critical and it wasn't all about Kurt. I am the most obvious symbol of it, but the, the symbol, the symbols in the, the actual people that keep things going. You know, it's obviously been for decades, John and Carol and Jane and Kurt. And then Carol retired and then Jane retired. Carol still comes in during pledge drives. Jane's still helping review right now potential broadcasters, their voice demos. They get sent to her on an MP3 as an email attachment. So the kind of people that on the leadership side there are just as many good broadcasters who never, who aren't such a symbol. The people like Fred and so many others that, that are really the heart and soul, the, really the reason why people contribute. They don't contribute because of me or Jane or John or Carol. They can contribute because of what people like Fred and all of our other broadcasters do. And so, yes, I'm, I'm a symbol and I'm very glad, and this is a thing that I'm proud to be dedicate, having dedicated my life to. And I'm looking forward not to having to walk totally away. Do I understand that the next manager will run things differently and make different decisions, budget and otherwise? Yes, that's their purview. They'll have to work with the WMNR Commission and, and to do that, and that's fine. I've even seen changes at WSHU that the new manager made, that the previous manager wouldn't have made. And I've talked to, to the new manager about that. And I'm aware some minor things change, but the mission of the station, I'm sure, can still exist and will, will, will be able to flourish through a new person. And one thing I will say that I haven't done as well of as I should have is fundraising. A lot of other things I can easily do. And one of the things I want to make sure I would be looking for in the next manager is somebody with strong fundraising skills. And that's typical for a lot of small, for a lot of stations that the general manager, the top person, they spend most of their time fundraising as representative of the station. Yeah, they have to take care of other stuff, but they also have other people to help do that. So the station's in good shape and I think it'll be in better shape with some fresher blood.
Well, now you will be actively involved in selecting your successor.
It's not up to me. It's up to the first selectman to determine what process he uses for hiring my replacement.
You know, in your head with, yeah, I would feel very relieved they've referred to if they did ask you. Anyway, God bless and do well. God, y'all.
Right.
Thank you.
Just, just to follow up on what Brian was saying, one, speaking as a broadcaster. I've been very fortunate. I joined on 11, 12 years now. But if you look at all of us, we are, we are all, I mean, you know, Garrett Stack and me and, and Will Deschamps, we're all very different individuals. And we've been allowed to be that because of Kurt and Jane and John and Carol and Rose, now Rose. That's been the, that's been the real strength of, of, of having Kurt and Jane around is that we've been allowed to do what we do, and they led us to what we do well. And, and it's been, it's been really for me, you know, I, I was our teacher, you know, I worked in advertising and medical publishing. I wasn't, but I was from a big musical family and Kurt and I talked and we talked about music when I first came in and, and, you know, it's, it's been, it's been an honor for me to be here these past 10, 12 years. And it's been a really good, because we don't, no, no one tells us what to do. We get by osmosis from, from Jane and from Kurt. We get the right direction to go in, and it's been a pleasure. So I, I wish Kurt well and I'm hoping to see him around, you know, when, when we have questions. He's the only guy, you go up to him and say, I need something 15, 15 minutes and 27 seconds long, and he says, 28:42. That one out. He knows all the music in the, in the, in the, in our library. He knows what it, what is, what's needed and it's always helped a great deal. So it's been a lot of fun. But it's, but having this eclectic sort of gangsters that work for him, all of these crazy people. He's, he's always been able to keep us in line and keep us focused, and that's been really good. It's been a lot of fun. So I'm, I'm, I'm sorry to see him go as well, and you're not gone, so it will, you know, it'll, you'll be around for a while, but it's, it's been, it's been good having that kind of focus behind us. Knowing we can call if we need support and we need help.
Thank you. Yeah, that's very heartfelt. I appreciate that. Patty, anything you want to share?
I have to get another driver. To me, the station, I always think of Kurt. When I think of the station, I think of John Babino, who's helped, you know, helped us get our candidates listened to, and I know Kurt's been involved with that. I mean, to me, when I think of WMNR, those are the two people I think of. Sad to see you go. Hopefully you will, as we're just saying, work, help us work through this process that's going to really, I think, take 18 months because you do everything. Your, your hand is in everything. People rely on your experience and your knowledge. And going forward, I think all of us on this commission will hope to be involved, but I hope that you will lead us and help us in that next choice that's going to be very important to be made. And to guide the first selectman, because I doubt if he's going to have the knowledge of through how to go through this or the, what experience is the most important for us to look to, to the people stepping up who are interested in taking this position. But I certainly thank you for everything you've done during all the years you've been there. Really helped the station and I appreciate you.
Well, thanks. It's, it's been a honor, a real honor. And I'm fortunate that since with many an organization, you're either paid and you're working and you're in charge or you're not. And in this case, I could step back into a volunteer role doing a weekly show, which I'm currently on now in a pre-recorded fashion and assisting, knowing that someone else is going to be calling the shots and they'll need to call me, but I'm willing to help out. And yes, I'll certainly offer my expertise along with the WMNR Commission to Ken because you know, obviously hiring a new Parks and Rec director, well, there's a Parks and Rec Commission. You have some idea what Parks and Recs does, but you know, WMNR is a, an unusual department of any town because most of what it does doesn't serve just the town. So if you'd like, I'd certainly be willing, unless someone else wants to say anything, segue on to the next agenda item. Brian?
I, I just want to thank each one of you for your heartfelt comments because that really, that's part of the heart of this group that we have here. And, you know, I, I came into this organization in an effort to try and protect the station when there was talks of parting it out over a decade ago. I stayed because of the hearts. John, Jane, who just ran away from me. Kurt, Carol are some of the finest quality people I've ever met, and it's an honor to, to be associated with you all. Getting to know Mark is one of the best technical people I've ever met. And, and then, of course, our commission members are outstanding. So that's why we're here is because we're better people as a result of being a part of this organization. And I think that's what keeps us coming back rather than just disappearing. You know, when we get frustrated on some other group that we might be involved in town. So thank you, Kurt. I will let you continue on in your conversation here and move on to the next topic, but it, this, this evening, this topic can't go without being fully recognized and, and chaired. So.
Betty, I appreciate this. Being, you know, half Swedish, I, you know, have trouble accepting, you know, focus and attention. And when I was in Sweden, 2008, a Swede told me the following joke. Says, you can tell an introverted Swede from an extroverted Swede because when an introverted Swede is talking to, he's looking at his feet. But an extroverted Swede, it's very different. He's looking at your feet. So to accept the gratitude and the grace, I have to try to use the non-Swedish side of me. And it's something I'll have to learn to, to do with grace, particularly as we go through this next process. Because yes, I can do a, a job description of what I'm doing now. But then there is the essential part that the next person should, should do and that the other parts are secondary and are things that I could still support for a number of years. So thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I'm gonna suggest that we move on. Thank you, I I'm gonna suggest that we move on before we get more choked up and and talking about this. The next item on the agenda was the advisory group discussion, I want to explain what that means.
Yes, one of the deficiencies. Uh let's see, so WMNR has grown a lot since eighty two. We lost, there's only been twice that I've had to present revised budget in the middle of the fiscal year. Uh once was in the can't remember what year it was, but I remember when I made the presentation to the Board of Education. Because it wasn't in the headquarters, but I'm guessing once was in the early nineties. Uh and then or mid nineties, late nineties, and then another time was in two thousand and eight, after the fall recession hit, presented revised budget. So we've had a a few ups and downs over the years, but not that much really. But still the the, you know, as we built up the station, the vast majority of the income, over ninety five percent of it comes from non-Monroe sources. And of course, that's the reason for our success. You know, this WMNR, unlike many a town organization, which just serves the town and maybe a few people ancillary to nearby towns who want to take part in one thing or the other. But yet, because the town is set up just to serve, have commissions and both elected and appointed boards that have a all Monroe residents. I wanted to bring up for discussion to the commission and then based on your input, pass it on, talk to the first selectman about having a, and I'm choosing my words carefully because they need to be, and I want to make sure there's not any misinterpretation. But to have a WMNR Advisory Committee, both the word advisory and committee formed, which would have non-Monroe residents and that group would report to the WMNR Commission. And I would even recommend that one member of the WMNR Commission be on the WMNR Advisory Committee to act as an official liaison. I, of course, would be there as well, but and of course, the whole idea that the town council would appoint an advisory group of non-Monroe residents falls outside its normal sphere of operations, a normal appointed group of the town of Monroe has a majority minority portionment of seats and the majority and minority members are recommended by the chairs of the respected Democratic and Republican town committees. And I'm, the thing is ninety five percent of our support comes from non-Monroe people. So I wanted to bring up the idea of based on your feedback, then bring it to the first selectman of having the town council approve a WMNR Advisory Committee of ten people whose lengths of will only be, say, two years or something. And they would be non-Monroe residents and there wouldn't be a minority majority split, they wouldn't have to do with parties and but yet who would, who would recommend that their appointment be occurred to the town council, the only thing I could think of would be that that both the WMNR Commission Chair and myself, after, you know, talking and talking to the people and see if they're interested, would recommend them to the town council to appoint to this advisory group, which would be strictly advisory in nature, with assist, would assist us with the fundraising of the station and offer programming. I can't say suggestions because programming by FCC definition always has to be under the complete control of the licensee. But to give programming feedback. And so anyway, I wanted to bring that idea up, it's a little convoluted and a little complicated. But yet, if the station's going to go forward, it needs to it, it's always been a bit of a handicap that we haven't had a greater connection of folks to bring in other than just being a major donor and a member of our Founder Society, major donors who give us a thousand dollar level or higher members of the Founder Society and they get a few extra, they get a special quarterly newsletter and a few extra offers of of an event or something, but nothing really special, nothing, nothing that involves having them sit on the committee or help in a in a greater capacity, but yet that's an important part of WMNR being able to leverage some of the the goodwill that people have for us into a little more financial support.
So I I follow what you're saying in terms of needing a a cross section. That that makes sense to me, having a a broader cross section of people that that can give types of feedback than than we can as a commission. Uh I think based in light of what you've described for a succession plan for yourself, that having people in the know or that have relevant feedback could also help in the in that transition process to have some continuity there. Curious whether it would make your day to day easier or harder? If you have more people that you have to interact with?
Uh it would actually make it easier because they would be, you know, after an interview recommended and then appointed by the town council. Because it would give me a little greater group to assist in the fundraising of the station, I mean. The broadcasters choose their own music and, you know, it's standard operating practice among classical music stations that you know, you get phone calls, not enough opera, too much opera, not enough Baroque, too much Baroque, not enough guitar music, too much guitar music, not enough organ music, too much organ music. So, you know, I'm not looking for the, that sort of little, that sort of feedback, but it would assist in having a greater formed, greater group to to help fundraise, to help again, the operation of the station has to stay within the purview of the town of Monroe, the town council, the first selectman, the WMNR Commission. But right now, we have a handful of people, we always get phone calls from, most of whom aren't major donors. And it would actually help the station. It would actually help the station. I think of there's a major donor who lives in a fancy senior place in Bloomfield. They used to be an elected member of the West Hartford Board of Education. They understand how these kinds of things work. There's a a major donor who happens to live in Brooklyn. Got listens to this, first found out about the station a decade ago from visiting friends in the country in Connecticut. They actually happened to work as a manager on a private family foundation, they understand how these things work. And they also really feel strongly about WMNR, which is great. So it's a, I think would help the station, the next manager. It's the kind of thing that could help us raise a little more money and and that, that's always a good thing.
As I was saying, it's nice to have people outside of Monroe involved, but you have to be careful that the commission and this advisory do not overlap and that the advisory feel they are doing something important, make an important addition. And so, as you said, it has to be set up very carefully. And in other words, there has to be coordination between the two. But that'd be good, who would be the chairman, would that be elected politically or what?
Well, you haven't gone though. You know, it would be up to the town council to determine, but I would think just to make sure that there's a clear line of authority that always falls back within the town sphere. They'd say perhaps the member of the WMNR Commission who is the liaison would actually be the chair of this advisory committee so that no group could, would have its own chair who might be confused with being the chair of the more important WMNR Commission or the chair of the town council or the first selectman. Want to make sure there's never any optics issues on that kind of a thing. Uh and their purpose would be to help provide fundraising. They wouldn't be approving of the budget, which the WMNR Commission does. There would be fundraising goals that would be presented and they I mean, I recently participated in a survey of non-pro, of public radio stations. Is there a minimum required for your board to you know, be a board member? I mean, this is typical for a lot of nonprofits, five oh one C threes where there's at least a minimal amount or maybe a larger amount. And or do they have to help raise a certain amount? And I had to put down, because this thing didn't, didn't, wasn't set up at all for our situation, that I could not require the board members of the WMNR Commission or the town council to donate to the station, because that would be in violation of ethics rules. You know, the thing that's norm for most nonprofits is abnormal for the town government whose purposes is to properly spend the taxpayers' money. But in this case, it isn't taxpayers' money, it's donated money. So this other group, its primary function would be fundraising, you would not be allowed to designate how the money is spent, that would always, that control would always remain with the WMNR Commission and the budget that's approved by the town council. That kind of thing, yes, it does have to be set up clearly.
Because when I, a long time ago, when I first went on it, it was called pardon? I, when I went on it a long time ago, it was called an advisory committee. And then became a commission, so I mean, this is excellent, just make sure they're two different boards and yet they're contributing and not overlapping, and I think we're in good hands. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else want to share thoughts, opinions on this topic? It's a lot to digest between the last two topics, I imagine we'll have more to think about for the next couple of months. All clear, if we are, then we'll move on to new business, the status of the generator donation.
Unfortunately, I've stalled out, I've needed to have good on the generator installation, I need to come up with a just description of the work that we want to have go out to bid. I will say that, you know, Mark could come up with a very well thought out, intelligent way to have both the new generator be the primary generator and our current generator be potentially a secondary generator. That would be manually switched in, but I've got to take a look, John brought up the excellent question of, you know, we need to find out from the generator repair people how long we think this, the current generator, which would end up being a secondary generator could be kept in service and whether it's worth literally wiring it in or not. So we need to get a little more information before we could come up with a a plan of work to then go out to bid for the electricians. And then the electricians, once we do that, then electricians are selected and they pull the building perm. They pull the electrical permit and take care of all that fun stuff.
I I will comment that there there is some benefit having a maintain, as long as it's financial, makes financial sense to have the old generator set up as a backup manual transfer generator. When we need to do service on the lightning and surge protection in the building, we can run on the backup generator while we service you service on the electrical system in the facility. Which presently, when we need to do service on the surge protection, we have to shut down all power to the plant which will take take us off the air and will force public safety, public works for their equipment to run on battery or we'd have to pull in a portable generator to power up their equipment while we do, while we have that service performed.
Yeah, Mark and John and I should get together and work out the the options and then take them to an electrician and find out what the cost would be for option A versus option B.
Mark, what's the size of the old generator?
Twenty five kilowatt. My thinking is we just get a manual transfer switch and put it in between the current transfers, the current automatic transfer switch and the current breaker panel. So it's which could also serve as in other emergencies, we should be, need to pull in a a rental generator, it would make that, it would make wiring in a rental generator that much easier since it's the plant is already wired for it.
And you have that, do you have twenty five KVA draw there? Because you can, you know, if if you can get by with the portable ones and you just, you can leave the wiring, the cut over for a portable one to have somebody come by with six thousand watts is not that big a deal.
Yeah.
If need be, but to try and maintain an offline generator without cycling is, is going to be a lot.
For the backup, for the, the person generator, I would, we would wire up something to have it do a weekly exercise, there's commercial products that that would be able to help with that endeavor.
Okay, I didn't want to turn this conversation into a big generator conversation, but I I'm, I'm interested in the topic, want to talk offline and be happy to discuss best practices or whatever. Anybody else, any thoughts on that? Okay, so we'll move over on to section four B, which is the tower painting guyware update.
Uh do anything you wanted to add, John, about the
Yeah, I mute you, John. All right, go ahead.
Hang on, John, you're gonna mute Mark?
All right, John, I mute you.
Okay, I'm on. Oh, oh, he locks me out, huh?
As the meeting, the host, I took the liberty to mute some people.
Okay. The um, we we paint the tower every five years, which most broadcasters do not do, they let it get faded and that can cause them to get fines. But it's an FAA requirement and it's backed up by the FCC. So we've historically have painted the tower every five years just to play it safe. A lot of people don't realize that that those towers are national and international navigation aids and the FCC and the FAA are very, very tough on those requirements. So that's why we keep doing that. I know that when I worked at Sikorsky on a helicopter program, I was in charge of the avionics, we used to fly the towers in the area for navigation, so people say, oh, you know, nobody gets that close to the tower, well, that's not true. The helicopters do fly around sometimes at night to check their navigation gear and they fly from tower to tower because they're surveyed in.
I've done it.
Pardon?
I've done it.
Okay. So um, that's one of the reasons why we do that and there's other methods of lighting the tower, but they also have issues like flashing strobes, which might have an issue with neighbors, we don't know. And we're due to have them come in. The only requirement that we have is that the people who are in the school, if they're there in the painting days is they move their cars away because you can get paint flying down. is they move their cars away because you can get paint flying down in an almost aerosol mode on their cars. So we have everybody park in the back. Did I cover the topic, Kurt, or is there something else you want me to bring up?
No, that's good.
Okay. They're very serious about that, by the way, just to tell you, you know, the fines on having a tower get into trouble because it wasn't painted right could be extremely high.
Makes sense. When I fly over that tower, I know I'm near home. Very neat. Any other questions on the topic of the tower itself? No, then I guess we move on to public participation. Anybody want to share anything on public participation? I can't hear you, John.
I was just going to quickly mention that, okay.
Like, I can hear you now.
My mic, my sound here, Mark, am I on?
Yes, I hear you, John.
Maybe it's some delay issue, Mark.
John is now, John. Unmute John. All right, hang on.
Do you have an automatic mute?
There we go.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I hear you, John.
License renewal, as a reminder, we may have mentioned before, starts in September with announcements. And then it runs up to the November, December timeframe for us. And there's pre-announcements we have to do. There's announcements while it's going on. And then there's post announcements that we have to do. One little layer of complexity is that because three or four of our translators are in New York, New York has a different due date than Connecticut does on license renewal issues. And the other little quirk we have is that the town council changes and elections and election year, right, we have to do the ownership reports. So there's been many a year, we've had to say, here's the old group going out for two more days. And here's the new group coming in that were elected and going through. And so we have to be very, very timely on getting the paperwork. And that's a big sensitivity for the radio station that those documents get in on time. And not say, oh, we have to look at them again. We have to renew them. No, you can't. That's it.
Very good. Okay, floor is open for public participation. Jane, you've been very quiet tonight. Would anything you'd like to add? Carol?
Nope, bud.
Okay.
I'd like to ask a question. I could try and find it on the website, but I don't know if Brian or Patty know this. Is there going to be a spring vacation for the Monroe Public Schools? Or is it all off the table with COVID and remote learning and all that?
I don't know.
Okay, I'll go to their website, look it up. I'm looking for opportunities for the tower painting crew and or the guywire tightening crew to come in. School really, it'd be best if school were not in session. We try for that first. So looking at the spring break or when they get out.
I'm sorry, I actually do know. It's going to be the week of April 12th. Because of the special election, they checked, they wanted to make sure the schools would be empty to hold the election on April 13th. So it's that April 12th, the kids are out.
April 12th, that whole five days, that whole week?
I think so, from what I understand. I'm sorry?
What special election?
The 112th state rep JP Shredzinski resigned. So we're electing a new state representative for the 112th, which is Sandy, part of Sandy Hook and Newtown and all of Monroe.
Are you going to be using Stephanie as a polling place? And then that would take it off.
Yep, all the polling places that we normally do, all four, all four schools.
On the 13th.
Correct.
Okay.
Being called Stephanie Elementary. They did the ask, I mean, they have it when I go to Stephanie Tower during school hours, I always make a point to do a call into Stephanie Elementary to let them know I will be on site. This is a, do they know a friend is
Well, we have to because you, John and I, and somebody was there a couple of years ago and they sent the Monroe Police Lieutenant to investigate what was going on in the woods of Stephanie Elementary School by the tower.
Yeah.
So, and the police lieutenant said, come on, guys, just get called before you show up. So we do that now. So, okay, I'm looking at the schedule and I'll contact, I'll double check with the Stephanie Elementary, make sure they're not having something special to find out when school is out and, and everything else. So okay, I'll look into that. And thanks for the update, Patty.
Excellent. All right. Well, I think that wraps things up. Who would like to make a motion to adjourn tonight at 8:54?
Petah Hany Commission Member, motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second that motion.
Name please.
Can you state your name, Fred, for the record?
Oh, I thought, I guess I, Fred Bullarty Commission Member, I second the motion.
I'm not used to.
Meeting adjourned at 8:55. Thank you for your patience with this whole virtual meeting.